We'll be meeting remotely and members of the public as well as the committee will provide the link to this meeting via the meeting posting. I also let the committee and audience members know that we are recording this meeting and we will do the roll call. So if you're here, let me know, Dave.
Here.
Jess.
Here.
June.
Here.
Lisa.
Here.
Mike.
Here.
Randy.
Here.
Susan, don't believe could make it. Tom.
Here.
And Craig is here, so that is a quorum. Thank you. The next scheduled meeting of the North Middlesex Regional School Committee will be held at 7:00 PM on Monday, October.
Eighteenth.
Eighteenth, thank you. All right. So we have the consent agenda, we have approval of minutes, payable warrants, payable warrants, disposal of surplus property, and a $25 donation from the Blackboard Giving Fund. I'll take a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
All right, it was Tom and I didn't get who was the second.
I was.
Thank you. Didn't flip over quick enough. All right. So this is for the consent agenda, Dave?
Yes.
Jess?
Yes.
June?
Yes.
Lisa?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Randy?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
And I will vote yes, so that is unanimous. Thank you. Next up, we have Public Communications. And just a reminder about public communication. So public communications is an opportunity for members of the public to address the school committee on matters that are on the agenda or within the purview of the committee. Per our policy, there's a 10-minute period for public comment and each speaker is allotted three minutes. All comments should be addressed to the chair and not members of the audience. And no single individual should be called out, shouldn't reference folks by name. This is really a chance to convey your thoughts and opinions. And if there's other issues to address, then we ask that you handle those through the proper, through the proper channels, through principals and the administration team, and then to the school committee if satisfactory resolutions not reached. So I believe we have one person for public comment this evening. So I will turn it over to Ms. Jennifer Kingsbury. And a reminder that we have about three minutes for her comments. She did, hopefully everybody on the committee received the full, she was nice enough to type up her full comments, so hopefully folks had a chance to read those. And I have asked that she touched on the highlights of that to get her message across. And I expect that there will be some follow-up discussions after this as well. So Jen, I'll turn it over to you.
Can you see me?
No, we can't see her because she's not a panelist, she's an attendee.
So I just speak and you hear me?
We can hear you, yes.
Okay, good. Okay, ready, set, go. Chairman Hansen, my name is Jen Kingsbury. I live in Pepperell and am the parent of an NM sophomore. I wish to commend those present for all of their hard work charting a course throughout the pandemic. However, I also wish to address what I perceive to be an egregious disservice to the students of the district in the form of the elimination of in-person foreign language instruction at the middle school level as of the current school year. This decision seems to have steamrolled from the proposal through implementation phases with little to no pushback. As best I can tell, by having scoured the school committee meeting agendas and minutes for all of 2021, this started out as part of the innocuously titled "Middle School Scheduling Proposal" about implementing an improved STEM curriculum presented to the school committee by middle school principals on January 4th. According to the meeting minutes, though there was never a school committee vote, it swept through the implementation stage with nary another public word. In their presentation, the cost of creating two new K-12 curriculum coordinators was to be balanced by the elimination of all four middle school foreign language teaching positions. This was justified in two ways. First, by stating that decent language teachers were difficult to attract and retain, and second, by citing survey results. As to the first, where was the grit in this district in trying to attract and retain better foreign language instructors? As to the survey, I do not know what prospective audience was surveyed, but I can tell you that I was not. This is not just a question for the parents of this year's crop of 7th and 8th grade parents. This change impacts middle schoolers of the district going forward, and many people have been left out of the decision and still have not been told of it. Furthermore, look at the two survey questions as posed. In the first question, the supposition is that language teachers couldn't be found. So instead, after a year of too much virtual instruction, including a failed one-year trial of a virtual language program in which the tutors weren't reachable by the students because they weren't even in the same time zone, another virtual program is offered. In the second, virtual foreign language instruction is pitted versus other in-person courses. No wonder the resounding answer to both questions was no. For the record, I am not anti-STEM. I hold a bachelor of science in electrical engineering and was a software engineer by profession. I logged the appointment of Dr. Cormier to the STEM director position. However, I also believe that language arts are equally important due to the critical nature of communication in any field, technological or otherwise. STEM and foreign language instruction should not be mutually exclusive. We live in an interdisciplinary world. Look no further than the pandemic of the past year and a half for proof that scientists worldwide must be able to collaborate. Circling back to the lack of public awareness, I know about this even now, eight months later, only by chance. Last spring, my son's favorite teacher was fired for the coming, now current, school year. She was the odd man out when the middle school foreign language teaching positions were eliminated and the middle school teachers were transferred to the high school due to seniority. It is incomprehensible that in the rush to implement this, the district compounded the stated problem of not being able to retain qualified language instructors by having fired a talented inspirational Spanish teacher. To date, there has still been no notification to the district-wide population about the elimination of middle school foreign language teachers. I believe there would be much more of an uproar if constituents were actually aware of this change. In conclusion, opening students' eyes to the experience of learning another language quite literally opens doors to a world of possibilities. Speaking as a STEM career professional, I urge you to please take up the issue of reinstating in-person foreign language instruction for our district middle school students. Thank you for your time. Respectfully, Jen Kingsbury. That's all.
Thank you, Jen. I appreciate it.
Can I comment on one other thing not related to this?
If you make it super quick.
Super quick. In the link that Superintendent Morgan sent out for the survey for input, when I click on that link, it says the survey is closed. That's just for your information.
Is that still the case? Because I know it didn't open till October 1st.
It was the case for me today.
Okay. Superintendent?
Yes, so I actually sent out an update today. I heard from the Collins Center over the weekend, they were having issues with the link and they are not going to be able to open up the survey link until Friday, the 8th. So it will open on Friday, the 8th, and that's what today's update said, and it will remain open through October 31st.
Okay, understood. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Jen. Thank you, Superintendent. All right, Robin, we had no other public comment, I believe.
No.
Okay. Thank you. Moving on to reports and information items. So Chairperson report, I don't have much. So I will defer to the Superintendent for his report.
Okay, I will be quick as well. I do want to make the committee and people on the phone call aware of what's happening with the facility study, so I will just give you a little bit of background on that. As you may be aware, the North Middlesex Regional School District has seen a steady decline in enrollment over the past decade. The district is not alone in facing this demographic trend, which has not only created challenges in our attempts to balance class size of staffing and facilities across our campuses, but has also resulted in a steady increase in our expenditures per pupil. The cost trend is not sustainable in the long term. As all of you know, the Edward J. Collins Center out of UMass Boston for Public Management is going to be doing a facility study here in North Middlesex. As part of the study, the Collins Center will be soliciting feedback and engagement during the month of October to help determine the values and priorities of our residents when it comes to educating our children. This effort will include both resident surveys and public engagement forums, and we would like to invite your participation in both. So this is for parents and community members that live in the North Middlesex Regional School District. The survey, as I just mentioned, went out again today due to a small glitch with the Collins Center. It will not open until October 8th, and then it will be open through October 31st. It is a district-wide online survey that everyone is invited to participate in. Then during the week of October 11th, the Collins Center will begin to host a series of public engagement sessions to more directly facilitate discussions and hear ideas. These are scheduled to be 60 to 90 minutes in length, and they will be virtual. Participants will be expected to actively engage in the discussion. As such, the number of participants will be limited to ensure a quality experience and constructive feedback. That link was also shared today. I will state that everyone's opinion in this matters, and as of right now, even though it was sent out last Friday, and I do realize we had a glitch with the survey, we only have one person signed up for the online engagement session. So please, again, parents and community members, if you can share those links, it would be much appreciated. I believe there is a 30-person maximum for these events, and if we need to add more, we certainly will. But we do want to fill these up first, and going above 30 for an online session would not be that productive. So again, all the information is in the update that I sent out today, so please take part in that. And just for everyone's information, both the survey results and the information discussions will be shared at the school committee meeting on November 15th. Any questions on that? Okay, again, it is all in the update that went out this afternoon, so please take a look at that when you have a moment. I'm going to turn it over for a school spotlight with Mr. McMahon, just talking about some of the events that have taken place at the high school during the first month of being open. Ms. McMahon?
Good evening. Thanks, Superintendent Morgan. I appreciate inviting me here tonight. Love the committee as well. Let's see you, folks. Lots of updates to share, some academic, some social, some athletic, but I think we've had a solid opening month, so I'll try to go chronologically best I can. Patriot Pride Day, the 7th Annual, was resurrected this year, so we had a great Patriot Pride Day where we did everything on the turf for the most part, and a lot of red, white, and blue, some good friendly competition, musical chairs between staff and students, but certainly a great day, nice cookout, nice weather, so kids had a blast. Another good community event. Last week, on the 24th September, we had a guest speaker, Jesse "The Machine" Green, who's also spoken at, I think Hawthorne Brook. A little bit motivational speaker, of no cost to the school or the district, just a gentleman with a great story to tell. Our seniors and juniors had a blast last period on Friday, and he put on a good show for them, so good way to end the week. We're gonna do another speaker, another speaker similar to him in November. We have a BMX performer coming in. It's a combination of motivational speaker and performance art, so kind of curious how that's gonna work out in the gym, but they say the ceiling's just high enough for the event, so more on that. This week is homecoming. Today marked our first day of Spirit Week, so students dressing up, different theme every day to dress up in, culminating in this Friday being red, white, and blue, the entire district. We've got involved with all the schools. Our K-8 schools will also be dressing up and encouraging their students to wear red, white, and blue this week, especially on Friday. At the high school, both Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday, we'll be sending some of our upperclassmen down to talk to our younger students about homecoming week, encouraging them to come out and see the game this weekend. We have games Friday evening, afternoon, and Saturday afternoon and evening, so culminating, let's see, Mr. Fisk jumped in, if I get a mistake here, but I believe we have field hockey Friday afternoon, volleyball Friday evening, Saturday afternoon, we have soccer on the turf, followed by 4 o'clock football game culminating in the, did I nail that? I thought so. And then the homecoming dance this weekend, and for the first time, we'll have the dance on the turf. So we'll keep some traditions alive best we can, and the kids seem like they're excited about it, so looking forward to homecoming week. Our equity training at the high school for staff continues this week. We had our two days back in August, four hours each on our two PD days leading into the start of the year. This Wednesday is a half-day for, so staff will have, the entire staff will have three hours additional equity training with their outside provider. And then on Thursday, about 20 to 25 staff will be continuing the training for another three hours. And we've arranged coverage with Nancy Milligan to make sure that those folks can participate and not miss teaching opportunities. Let's see, last week, Becky Jackson ran a voter registration. We had a huge turnout, about 75 students registered to vote last Tuesday. Excuse me, good night. Sorry about that. We are starting Drivers Ed at the high school in October in conjunction with Townsend Auto School. It's a parent reach out this summer. I reached out to the owner, Brian, and long story short, we're gonna be offering three sessions of Drivers Ed through Townsend Auto. We simply are providing a space for them to use. But we'll do a fall, winter, and spring session, so dates are tentative on that, but we're hoping to start in the next few weeks, Tuesdays and Thursdays, the three hours, five-week sessions, and we'll see how that goes. But Townsend Auto could be a good relationship for the school and for the district. Couple of final things, we have formed two committees this year to look at some of our goals and the five-year plan. We have our first meeting for the Capstone Committee, meeting this Wednesday after school to discuss what we hope to see come out of the new schedule next year, the five-by-seven, look into the Capstone project, at least piloting it with some seniors this year and look at it next year as well. We also formed a committee to explore Flex, as we hope to bring Flex back into the schedule full-time next fall, so the committee meeting on that as well. We're also gonna use our building-based PLC time to brainstorm and look at ideas for Flex next year. And then lastly, recently released MCAT scores. Some good trends in NM. The most profound trend was brought to my attention by one of our ELA teachers. I was in the Boston Globe, and I'll quote this, 10th grade ELA scores. We had a 14% increase in our students that exceed expectations. I'll say that again, for our 10th grade ELA, a 14% increase in students that exceed expectations. And that was brought to my attention by one of our ELA teachers who was checking scores the second they were, the embargo was lifted. But definitely a nice note to kind of kick things off within that department, and then look ahead at some other subgroups moving forward. So that's where we're at right now. Mr. Fisk, anything I might have missed in that conversation?
Well, no, I am coming at you live from our volleyball match versus GD, so I figured I could show you student support here tonight. I don't know if you can see behind my shoulder there, but we've got probably 100 or so students here supporting our girls volleyball program. Unfortunately, it's raining outside, so our field hockey game did not get the same turnout, but we are excited to have our students supporting each other, and just wanted to, I know I invited all the committee members to come check things out, and it's a virtual meeting, so that didn't quite work out. So just wanted to thank everybody and offer that.
And Ms. Smith or Mr. Tanaka? Both APs are here as well. Anything else to tell, folks? Okay.
Thank you, Ms. McMahon.
Thank you. Appreciate it, folks.
And just two more quick reminders, again, to everyone that's on the call. We are starting something new this year called the Fall Parents Caregiver Information Series, and we do have two events coming up this month in October. They will be taking place in person at the Performing Arts Center at the high school, beginning at 6:30 PM, and there are four in total, but there are two this month. The first one is next Tuesday, October 12th, and that is on navigating the Common Application and Naviance, put on by the North Middlesex Regional High School Guidance Team. This is a presentation that several parents have asked for, and it's really geared towards 9th, 10th, and 11th graders that are looking to go to either a two- or a four-year college. Believe me, having two, one that's actually graduated and one that is in college now, being familiar with the Common Application and how to make your way through Naviance is very, very important, and it is not something you really want to wait on until your student is in 11th or 12th grade. So getting involved in the 9th and 10th grade is certainly a good idea, would highly recommend it, and that is next Tuesday, October 12th. And then, two weeks from then, on Tuesday, October 26th, we have something, we have a workshop put on called "How to Manage Team Mental Health," put on by Dr. Dan Rosa, who's a veteran clinical psychologist, and he has done presentations throughout Massachusetts and New Hampshire that is also at 6:30, and it's geared towards middle and high school students, but it's for the parents, not for the students themselves. So again, "How to Manage Team Mental Health for Parents and Caregivers of Middle and High School Students," put on by Dr. Dan Rosa. And that is all I have for tonight.
Excellent. Thank you, Superintendent. Any questions for Superintendent? All right. Thank you, Superintendent. And Mr. McMahon, congratulations to your staff and students on the 14% increase. That's fantastic to hear. So thank you. Moving on to new business, we've got cheer team out-of-state travel approval. Mr. Fisk? Still coming out of live.
Sorry, yeah, I'm mobile and it's noisy in the background here. So looking for permission from the committee for our cheerleading team to compete in an event right above the border there in Nashua. Our coach is familiar with the folks at the Nashua High School there and made that connection, and we're just looking to get our team involved with some things, especially where we didn't really sponsor a competitive cheerleading team last year. We're trying to piece it together as we go along here this fall and give them as many opportunities as we can, so I'm happy to answer any questions that were, maybe that might come up.
All right, so I'll take a motion to have the school committee vote to approve the North Middlesex Cheer Team to travel to Nashua, New Hampshire to compete on October 24, 2021? So moved.
So moved. Second.
Go back to Dave and Jess. Any questions or comments? Seeing none. We'll go down the roll. So Dave?
Yes.
Jess?
Yes.
June?
Yes.
Lisa?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Randy?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
And I will vote yes, so that's unanimous. Thank you. And good luck, Mr. Fisk, for the team.
Great. Appreciate it.
Next, we have the Nissatissit Middle School 20-year lease agreement. Superintendent or Ms. Haynes, who has this one?
I'll turn it over to Ms. Haynes.
Yes, some of you may have been aware of this coming up for a vote, but the district has been obviously at Nissatissit since it was constructed, but there was never a formal lease in place with the town of Pepperell. And I think the reason that happened is, I think there was an understanding that the building was owned by the school district, but that never was either maybe the intention originally, but never actually took place. And I interviewed a number of people, some old school committee members, and some prior superintendents, and the short of the story is that we needed to come forward with the actual lease agreement. And so we worked with our attorney to draft a lease agreement and then forwarded it to the town of Pepperell. They reviewed it, made a few changes, and the document that you're seeing, except for the address for our district, is what was result of that. The Board of Selectmen in Pepperell has already approved this. That doesn't mean, you know, obviously, if there was some changes like the address, we can go back with that at this point. But we're looking to authorize the, probably the chair to sign the 20-year lease agreement. The agreement includes a 10-year optional renewal, and it also includes a termination clause with notice of six months. I don't know if there's any specific questions about it or comments.
May I speak, Craig? Sorry, I don't see a raise hand feature unless I'm missing it. Okay. Nancy, how's this compared to the other leases that we have for some of the other buildings with the town? I'm assuming it's very similar. I just didn't have anything for comparison.
They're actually quite different, to be honest. Some of the lease agreements were very short. I mean, Ashby's lease agreement is just a few pages long, missing access for the town. There's just a number of things that weren't included in those. So this was, I sent the original draft of the Peter Fitzpatrick School to our council and had them review what we had done before to make sure, you know, the general consensus was in the lease agreement. But essentially, I think he started from scratch somewhat. Those were old, pretty old agreements.
Any other questions? Nancy, I saw your note about needing to amend the address up in the, I just lost which paragraph it was, I think it was.
Yes, it's right at the front end. They have 66 Brookline Street in Pepperell, but it's actually Townsend.
And then I guess, go ahead.
Sorry, one more point. We do have a pending lease with the town of Townsend for Spalding as well, and Ashby's will be coming up as well, but there's some review to be done on that one first.
I guess my only question is around the extension and why, why is it 10 years and not just another 20? And what happens after that 10? Is that, I guess then what happens?
I mean, I suppose 20 would be an option. I think the, I'm not sure if that's just an arbitrary number, I'd have to ask why that was selected, but it's not something that I spoke to the attorney about at all. But I assume that after what would then be a 30-year timeframe, they're asking you to go back and review the lease terms. Doesn't mean you can't sign another one going forward, it's just you can't renew it again.
Right. I guess just another, just in Section 16, it also says 66 Brookline Street, Pepperell, so that would need to be updated as well.
Yep.
Any other questions or comments from anybody? All right, so I will take a motion to have the school committee vote to approve the town of Pepperell lease agreement for the Nissatissit Middle School as amended, and those amendments are just updating the address.
So moved.
Second.
Lisa, and is that Mike?
Yes.
All right, any other questions or comments? All right, Dave?
Yes.
Jess?
Yes.
June?
Yes.
Lisa?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Randy?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
And I will vote yes, so that is also unanimous. Thank you. Next is the school committee goals and what I would like to recommend is forming a working group to go off and come up with goals for this committee for discussion at either our next or the meeting after the next meeting, preferably before we get too far into the school year, but I'd like to talk about that, sort of what folks' thoughts are. If there's any volunteers. Tom, do you have your hand up? You're circled in yellow, and I don't know why.
Not that I'm aware of, no.
Okay. Maybe that means you're volunteering, which I would appreciate. All right, I'm gonna have to appoint people. Happy to do that.
I can volunteer, somebody would like to take a look at some stuff with me.
Okay. Thank you, Randy. Anybody else? I think we had three goals last year, if I'm remembering right. So it's not a lot of heavy lifting to come up with what we as a committee want to do this year and how we measure whether or not we're and how we measure whether or not we're successful as a group, so.
I can help Randy as well.
Excellent.
I would normally volunteer for this. My travel schedule for the next three months is pretty much out of control, so I'm not gonna have a lot of time the next three months. I apologize.
No worries. Anybody else want to help Randy and Lisa? All right, so I will. Good. I will then take a motion to, well, do we need a, I don't know if we need a motion, do we? Have you guys go off and do that and then just come back? It's not really a committee or anything, right? So. Okay, so we'll have Randy and Lisa go off, come back with something either by our next meeting or the meeting right after that one, which I guess would be early November, and have something for the committee to review and preferably vote on at that point would be good. Thank you both. I appreciate it. Next is the MASC delegate selection. So the MASC conference is coming up quickly, November third to the sixth. And I believe the last day of the conference, there's the delegate meeting where representatives from all the school committees that are part of MASC anyway, which I think is all but one, come together to cast their votes on the resolutions we're about to talk about and also vote on any amendments that may come up during the meeting. I believe, David, you were the delegate last year.
Yeah, so I did the nose game. I'm out.
You're out? So I don't know if anybody, A, is planning to go, and if so, is interested in being our delegate. I am still actually not even sure if I'm able to go, so I've kind of bowed out unless we're not sending anybody, but. And I actually don't.
I won't be there this year.
If there's a remote option or not this year, I don't remember. Thought there was, but. Is anybody planning to go? Maybe I should start with that question. No?
I can't make it this year.
All right. Well, I guess we'll make it easy if nobody's planning to go. Okay, then we will, I guess, forego that if we're not gonna have a presentation at the conference. Okay, so we'll move on to the resolutions. There's nine of them this year.
Does this mean we can skip over those as well since we won't be voting? I know it's a favorite topic every year, the.
It is a favorite topic. I mean, I would. I'm just looking at them.
Because we're not gonna be able to give direction on which way to vote if we don't have anyone there.
Yeah, but some of them could still help set direction for this committee. Because I know we have voted on resolutions outside of their meeting structure last year. What does the committee think?
I've looked through them. There are a number of them that I don't think necessarily pertain to us. And I think the frustrating thing about all of this, too, is that it, I don't know, it's just super political and I've never seen anything. I've never seen anything useful happen from the use of time going through all of these things and then encouraging MASC to, you know, send forward, you know, this work or whatever. Nothing ever actually comes from this. It's a big waste of time.
I agree. I mean, I've been doing this for thirteen years and I was a delegate early on. And not only do we spend a lot of time going over these things, but then on the floor, they change so many times after that that what finally gets voted on is completely different in most cases than what we even talk about. I've never been a fan of them for the most part, just because of the structure they have, but that's just my opinion. But I've never even seen any of these things, for the most part, come into reality as written. Like I said, they mostly change on the floor a million times. Unless, of course, is one that we're very much, that has to do with us. If there was a regional one, but usually when the regional ones come up, we get shut down because we're one of the few minority, you know, of regional schools that will actually speak up, so we usually get shut down anyway.
Any other thoughts or comments? I did just confirm there is a virtual option for the conference this year. Robin, do we have anybody registered for the conference or no? Sorry, as you're taking a drink, I ask you the question.
I'm sorry. Did you ask if I've registered?
Did, yeah, did anybody register or did we register anybody to attend the conference?
I think I've registered two of you, you and one other person. So I've just been holding on to them to find out if you want me to cancel them or if somebody's actually going to attend.
Okay. Because if there's a virtual option, I mean, I can squeeze stuff in much easier that way than if it's if it's remote. So I will probably attend. If no one else is gonna go, I will probably attend virtually. So if no one else is going to attend, then we should cancel that and get that money back. Is anybody else interested in attending?
I'll be in Florida.
Okay. Do they have phones down there, Mike?
Lot of meetings, lot of meetings.
I know. I'm giving you a hard time.
Bad connection in the sun.
The solar rays, I tell you. All right, so, Robin, if we could just cancel the second registration. And then I guess I'll attend remotely.
Okay.
Or else I don't know if that changes the level of registration or not, but I will not be in person. For the resolutions. Does anybody want to go through them? Does anybody want to go through them and not have to read them all out completely? People read them ahead of time?
I mean, I'm happy to read them. I don't mind doing the actual reading part of them. Again, like I said, it's just, I don't know, it's weird political stuff where, like, one of them's like, give free Wi-Fi to every student in every K twelve student in the state. And that's just not gonna happen. I don't like, that's just not a thing that's gonna happen. One of them was, I don't know. One of them's about recess. I don't know. It just, it just seems like, you know, well, hey, here's this wish list. And then I don't even know that they necessarily even really go to the governor or the state legislator. I don't know what good comes of this. It just seems like we go and we vote and then at the meeting, we talk about it and then nothing actually happens after that, so.
Yeah, I mean, I think they use it for direction on like more of the political side, from my experience anyway, that they kind of sets the direction for what they decide to lobby for or against and put their weight behind in some cases. But I think like you and Mike have said, I mean, even the ones that when I was a delegate a few years ago. I mean, I couldn't even tell you what they were, let alone what action was taken since then on any of them. But that's not to say stuff wasn't happening. It just has not been at the forefront.
As a delegate, too, it's hard because as these things change on the floor a million times, you're kind of left on your own to figure out how to vote after that, and it never seems to work out right.
No, I've seen, yeah, it either doesn't work out right or you get a lot of people who then abstain because the amendment passes somehow and then they don't know what to do at that point.
Yeah, it gets confusing.
Yeah. So in the interest of time, I'd like us to go through them. We can vote to not vote. That is certainly an option. We can vote them down and we can vote in favor of them, meaning we can vote to support it, vote to not support it, or vote to take no action on them. So if there are items that we feel are just politically not applicable to us or really have nothing to do with our district, or we don't want to take a stand out, we can certainly vote that way as well. So Mr. Carney, since you graciously volunteered to do all the reading, I'll turn it over to you for the first resolution and we'll take them one at a time and try to go more quickly through them.
Yep, that sounds good. All right. Resolution one, dedicated funding for school-based clinics and services sponsored by the Framingham School District, School Committee, excuse me. Whereas there are several overall benefits associated with a coordinated school health program, including improved student performance, decreased risky behaviors, reduced dropout rates, less absenteeism, and support teacher teamwork. And whereas school-based health centers represent cost-effective investments of public resources says by reducing inappropriate emergency room time, room use, excuse me, reducing Medicaid expenditures, preventing mental health issues and suicide attempts, and reducing hospitalizations. And whereas there is a significant increase in healthcare access by students who use school-based health centers. Therefore, be it resolved, the MASC supports proposals that would establish dedicated funding for school-based physical health and mental health clinics and services. The rationale given is that maintaining physical, social, and emotional wellness in students translates into establishing an optimal learning environment and sets students up for future excellent health standards in addition to decreasing absences and school, sorry, and school discipline referrals. Reduction in medical expenditures, reducing inappropriate emergency room use, decreased pregnancies, and increased overall physical and mental health.
All right, so thank you, Dave. So again, this one is to support MASC supporting proposals that would establish dedicated funding for everything that Mr. Carney just read. Any comments or a motion?
I actually found a raised hand and I didn't see anything when I hit it.
Just as you started talking, I saw the yellow. Oh, no, there's a little hand up there.
A little hand by my name.
All right, go for it, Randy.
I just have questions on this one. Is this like, are they looking for like full medical clinics within the schools? Or is this just kind of expanding a little bit of what we already have for health services? And as well as, is this something that we're seeing in this district as well as I imagine a lot of the inner city districts? And the poorer districts see a lot of this. I'm not sure if we see it in our own district or not.
Superintendent, can you, is there any detail you can provide on that in terms of what we offer, what we're seeing?
It certainly, some middle school, excuse me, some urban school districts do offer some way of health clinics, whether it be dental or even medical in some of the larger urban districts. But again, I think it's a great idea, but I'm not sure how it's something that suburban districts would ever be able to see without some significant funding. The costs, I think, would be pretty significant because you'd be looking at essentially every school having one in some of the larger districts. At least having multiple sites within one school district. I don't think one would be enough because kids would have to be transported from one school to another to obtain any type of medical service. So you'd need transportation as well if it's not at every school. So if it were to come to NM and we didn't have it at every school, we'd have to provide transportation to that school for the student to be seen by the medical professional. So again, kind of just echoing the thoughts of some of the other committee members, I think there's a lot of grandiose ideas and proposals that the MASC makes. I'm just not sure how they ever really get through with the price tags that are attached to some of them.
Yeah, I mean, along those lines, I think it's laudable. You know, school districts have been offering, you know, students free lunches and a lot of the needs that they need that aren't being met, especially in the more urban districts and the poorer districts. This just seems, you know, I understand the resolutions for funding, but I don't think this is a prime objective of the schools. And whereas it's not beneficial to all the districts in the state, I'd rather the MASC be working on stuff that really benefits everybody.
Thank you, Randy. Dave?
And so don't get me wrong, when I talk about something like this, I understand all of the challenges that school faces or schools face. I understand how much work we do in schools. But like, we struggle to get nurses, enough nurses into the building on a daily basis. Setting up a whole clinic potentially in every single school because, you know, like Superintendent Morgan was saying, we would have to potentially provide transportation. I just don't see this as a fleshed out idea. That's a really good use of time. I don't know whether they want to go with it.
Do you want to make a motion either not to support or to take no action on this thing?
I would support making motion to take no action. Or I'd make a motion that we take no action on this resolution.
In a second?
Again.
Was that somebody saying second? I didn't.
Yeah, it was me. I second it.
Thank you. All right, so we have a motion to take no action on resolution one. Any other comments or questions on this one? All right, seeing none. Dave?
Yes.
Jess? Do we lose Jess?
Sorry, yes.
Thank you. June?
Yes.
Lisa?
Yeah.
Mike?
Yeah.
Randy?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
And I will vote yes, so we will take no action on resolution one, resolution two, homework gap and Wi-Fi slash internet access.
Resolution two, homework gap and Wi-Fi internet access sponsored by the MASC Board of Directors. Whereas the homework gap is widely known and documented aspect of the digital divide by which students without access to reliable high-speed broadband internet at home fall behind their peers academically. And whereas remote and hybrid learning models expose the deep, the homework gap phenomenon and compounded the deeper learning gap dilemma whereby students without reliable high-speed broadband internet access are unable to engage in meaningful digital learning activities. And whereas the students who are most likely not to have access to reliable high-speed broadband internet are already chronically and systematically underserved, such as low-income minority and/or rural students, making this a critical equity issue. And whereas Massachusetts Public School Districts continue to invest in digitally rich curriculum materials which provides students with authentic learning opportunities coupled with real-world skill development, which prepares our students for a digitally rich global economy. The need for reliable high-speed broadband internet access will only become more necessary for the students of Massachusetts Public Schools to fully access their curriculum. Be it resolved, the MASC, or sorry, the Massachusetts Association of School Committees file for and support legislation which seeks to provide free broadband internet access, internet to all K twelve students in Massachusetts. It further resolves that MASC support federal initiatives and legislation to improve national high-speed broadband internet infrastructure. Expansion, the FCC's E-rate program to include to include homes of K twelve students or any other steps to expand free access to reliable high-speed broadband to the students of our nation. uh, to include homes of K-12 students or any other steps to expand free access to reliable high-speed broadband to the students of our nation.
If any questions on this one, Randy?
Um, I guess the first question I would is, um, the E-Rate Program, is that for, um, the students like on free and reduced, uh, that are financially challenged or is the E-Rate Program something else?
So the E-Rate Program, uh, can I jump in here, Craig?
Please, yeah, absolutely.
The E-Rate Program is a, a program that allows, uh, I believe it's federal, um, and it allows the expenditure towards technology-based solutions for school districts, libraries, and I think other municipalities as well. So it's, it's not a specific program for, for, um, for reduced. It's, it's used by the district uh, every year and it's put towards technology costs. So I think what they're asking, what they're saying is allow that program to expand to include uh, being able to provide the internet access for families that may not have, be able to obtain it directly.
Yeah, I, I, I think, yeah, I think this is a good thing. I think, uh, it needs to be amended. Uh, I don't think we need to seek free broadband for every K to 12 student. Um, I think we need to, uh, try to, um, have, uh, have an address on areas that don't have the broadband. I know we had a couple of areas that we've been working, the, the district, I believe, uh, Superintendent Morgan has been working with Comcast, uh, and Verizon to get access to a couple of areas that literally did not have any. And I would rather see the efforts of this be put towards, um, households that can't afford it. Um, but I don't think we need to be going free K to 12 just because there are students in Massachusetts.
Would we maybe just strike the word free from that second to last paragraph? And still support providing broadband to all students, just not necessarily free? Or does that not go far enough?
Um, oh, sorry, I'm looking at it. Um, definitely. I'd like to add something in there for the, for the families that cannot afford it. I believe there are programs out there now. Um, if someone, either Nancy or Superintendent can, uh, verify that there are free internet programs out there for families that can't afford it in Massachusetts.
Yes, there are.
Okay. Um, do you know?
With the signals.
Yeah.
Um, a- again, because of the last act of signal in, in certain neighborhoods in our communities, even the free internet can still be a problem.
Right. I just wanted to know, looking at how to, um, uh, modify or amend this, uh, resolution. Um, I, you know, I was just trying to figure out how needed is more programs for free internet for those that need it. If those programs are there already, um, then I would, uh, probably make an amendment. Uh, be it resolved that the Massachusetts Association of School Committees file for and support legislation, which seeks to provide broadband internet signals to all K to 12 students in Massachusetts. Cause that's really the important thing is that the, that the, the access to the signal is there if there's already programs in place uh, to get it free or to just have it in the household. So.
Do I have a second on that amendment? Not that we made a motion or need to make a motion?
Yes, I, I'll move that.
Thank you.
I second Randy.
Thank you, Jess. All right, um. Dave, do you have a comment on that amendment or can we finish talking about the amendment and then come back to you?
Yeah, we can do that.
Okay. Any discussions on amending that to strike the word free and add the word signals after internet? All right.
Can you, can, can we read that sentence again?
Sure.
Whatever, whatever part that is actually being amended.
Okay. It's be it resolved that the Massachusetts Association of School Committees file for and support legislation, which seeks to provide broadband internet signal to all K to 12 students in Massachusetts.
Do you have thoughts on that, Dave, or?
I mean, I don't, I, I don't know. Yeah, I, I don't know.
Are you unsure of, of what?
I, I don't want to necessarily clarify my thoughts.
Okay. All right. So this is just to amend this. This is not to support the resolution. So, um, I don't see any other questions on the amendment. So this is again, just to strike one word and add another, uh, Dave?
No.
Jess?
Yes.
June?
Yes.
Lisa?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Randy?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
And I will vote yes, so that passes. Um, so now we're back to the full resolution. Uh, Dave, use your hand up.
I think I'm going to just take my hand up.
All right. Any other comments on the full resolution? All right. Someone want to make a motion one way or another on the resolution as amended? Now's your chance, Dave.
I move to take no action on it. Since nobody else is moving.
Second.
Second from Dave. All right. So we have a motion to take no action on resolution two, which we have amended. Um, any comments, discussion on that?
Yeah, so I, I know that internet access was a huge problem for my students in the last year. I think that there are a lot of really smart ways to try and get this done. I also think looking at, you know, like in Pepperell, I only have access to one internet provider. You know, and so there are all, I'm not sitting here, I think the cause is, is noble, you know, all kids should have, all kids should have internet access. I, I think I could, I can get behind that. Um, I think all kids should have access to food first. It's probably where I'm going to start with, you know, like it's, it's just, this isn't the biggest priority to me. Um, and, uh, any good tool could be used improperly. And so I don't know if, again, I don't know that this is, this is my most pressing priority. I think there are a number of things, uh, that could be fixed or should be fixed first. And so, yes, I, I do want internet access for all the students in the district and all my students. Again, there are so many other kind of things in the way. I don't know what the point of this is.
Any other comments? I will, um, I will echo Dave's comments. I mean, I, and I appreciate you took some time to put your thoughts together because you said it very well. As with a lot of these resolutions over the years, it's, it's sometimes mind-boggling to think that these are the top priorities of M.A., MASC to, to go after. Um, it's not to say that these things aren't important. But when there are issues of, uh, kids eating or not, um, kids having a safe home to go to, literacy, things like that. Um, I think there's a lot more they could do in those areas before they get down to, uh, free internet for everybody. So.
And to add to, um, homework's not even the most important part of education and remote learning. I think we all thought wasn't great. It doesn't require full engagement. So again, yes, I do want kids to have internet access. Speaking of my students who I adored, you know, and, you know, when, when they might tell me, hey, you know, like, ah, I couldn't get the homework done. You know, last night I didn't have the internet access. And then, you know, looking at their YouTube history, I could see quite the opposite of, you know, how many Minecraft videos we watched during the time. I, it's, it's, I want kids to have, in the hierarchy of needs, internet access is not the top, is not the top of my list. So I think that we should take no action as the, uh, as the message.
All right, anybody else? Okay. So this is take no action on resolution two. Dave?
Yes.
Jess?
Yes.
June?
Yes.
Lisa?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Randy?
I'm going to say no because I think this is a little bit more important than, uh, what's been expressed, but that's fine.
All right. Tom?
Yes.
And I will vote yes. So that is no action passes. Thank you. Resolution three, idea for funding act.
Sorry, working on a different computer tonight. So the way that I flip between tabs is, uh, different. Okay. Resolution three, idea full funding act sponsored by the MASC Board of Directors. Whereas it is the legal responsibility for public schools to provide a free and appropriate education for all students in the least restrictive environment. And whereas the cost to educate students with disabilities who qualify for special education services can be an extraordinary burden on the finances of our public schools, impacting the resources available to all students. And whereas the for, uh, federal funding through, uh, IDEA is currently only providing approximately 15% of the extra cost to educate students receiving special education services, far less than the 40% promised by, uh, promised in IDEA. Uh, and whereas the IEDEA fun, full funding act had been proposed to fully fund IDEA through an incremental seven-year increase in funding, which had both bipartisan and bicameral support. Therefore, be it resolved that the, uh, Massachusetts Association of School Committees calls upon the Massachusetts Congressional Delegation to reintroduce and promote the passage, uh, of the IDEA Full Funding Act.
All right. Do you still have your hand up, Dave, or do you have something else to say on this one? No.
Okay. Um, so I know that I have reached out to Lori Trehan as, uh, as a school committee member with regards to this topic. Special education funding is, uh, okay. So special education is an incredibly important thing to the students, uh, that require it in our school districts. Uh, and funding is a major challenge for school districts. Uh, I could not support this motion anymore. It's, it's, we need the funding, we need the funding, we need the funding to provide appropriate educational services to our students. Uh, and so I, this is the stuff that I think they should be getting behind.
Thank you, Dave. Anybody else?
I mean, in a perfect world, I've always said that the special education funding should come from higher up. It shouldn't be left to the schools to have to manage because if you have certain issues that pop up mid-school year, if you've already set your budget and, you know, a student moves in or something like that, you have to pretty much recreate a lot of your budget. And, uh, I, I'd rather see it be taken to a much higher level.
Anybody else? All right, Dave, you want to make a motion?
Yep. Uh, I move that we adopt, uh, or that we support, uh, resolution three.
Second.
Made by Dave, seconded by Jess. Any other questions or comments before we vote? All right. Uh, so Dave?
Yes.
Jess?
Yes.
June?
Yes.
Lisa?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Randy?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
And I will vote yes. So that's unanimous. Thank you. Resolution four?
Resolution four, recess sponsored by the MASC Board of Directors. Whereas due to regulations promulgated by the Massachusetts Educational Reform Act of 1993, which excluded recess from time on learning calculations and the federal No Child Left Behind Act, which tied funding and local control of schools to standardized test scores, recess in many Massachusetts elementary schools has been diminished or eliminated to provide more time for academics. And whereas the CDC and the Society of Health and Physical Educators have jointly stated that all students should be given at least 20 minutes of recess daily. And whereas research provided by the U.S. Department of Health and Human Services has shown the benefits of recess to include improved social and emotional development, improved memory, attention and concentration, reductions in disruptive behavior in class and increased levels of physical activity. Therefore, be it resolved that the Massachusetts Association of School Committees support legislation, current bills S-383, H-695, calling for at least 20 minutes of uninterrupted supervised, safe and unstructured free play recess per day, which cannot be excluded from structured learning time requirements. It may not increase the total number of hours required in the school year for Massachusetts Elementary School students.
Thank you, Dave. Questions, comments, motion?
I move that we adopt or that we support resolution four.
Second.
All right. Motion's been made in second. Dave and Tom, support resolution four. Randy?
Um, I just had a question for Nancy Milligan. Whereas this resolution is calling, um, to have at least 20 minutes of uninterrupted supervised, safe and unstructured free play, recess per day. I think recess definitely is worthwhile. Is this something that we want to have mandatory and how would that affect our curriculum?
So when you're looking at this, this calls for all students. So that just remember that was your voting on that. That's K-12 or pre-K-12. The way it's currently written. So when we're at the elementary level, we have this definitely already integrated in that the middle schools were tried to do this in grades at least five and six at both middle schools. And there's some body break times. Um, again, looking at the locations of the two buildings, it's easier done at one location than the other. Um, but then you'd also have to think about how this contractually would hit our high school and the scheduling piece there, the, the way it's currently written. So just, just things to consider. Not to say that breaks aren't needed. Um, but just as it's currently written, that it's a pre-K through 12 initiative.
Um, I would like to move then and make an amendment and, um, make the amendment of therefore be resolved that the Massachusetts Association of School Committees support legislation, uh, current bills S dot 383 and H dot 695 calling for, um, for, um, an optional 20 minutes or more of uninterrupted, uh, supervised, safe and unstructured, uh, free play recess per day, which cannot be excluded from, uh, structured learning time requirements in the rest of the sentence. So just want to make it more optional, um, that if schools do provide it, that it does. That if schools do provide it, that it does count towards the structured learning time requirements, but not make it mandatory.
Do I have a second on that? Dave, do you have your hand up?
Was for something else?
Well, if there's no second, you can say you're something else.
Yeah, no, I guess I hadn't. So on the resolution, I caught the part about elementary education and then just didn't see that it was for all K twelve.
It, the second the second paragraph. More references to CDC says that, that all students should be given at least 20 minutes of recess daily. The only part that mentions the elementary is the very last sentence. Where they say that they're calling for 20 minutes of uninterrupted time. And then it says in the school year for Massachusetts elementary school students. So it is a little misleading. If so unless somebody wants to second Randy's motion to add the word optional. We will, we'll move on, Jess.
I just had a quick question. With that, so if we did that with the high school level, would that just add 20 minutes to their day or would that screw up their scheduling?
You wouldn't be able to add 20 minutes of day without negotiating an extended school day.
Middle school too.
As well as the resolution says that it should not be increasing the total number of hours required. So.
I believe.
Can I second Randy's?
It doesn't mention. It doesn't mention middle and high school in that last sentence, which leaves grades five and six in question because of the format of our middle schools. So the way I'm reading it is, is that everyone should get recess, but potentially would impact the length of the school day in two of our buildings, which would be subject to collective bargaining.
The intent is, is right for the elementary students, but there's a lot of clarification needed in this resolution.
Yeah, can I second Randy's optional?
Sure. And Randy, just check my verbiage here, because I, I I think I heard your intent, but I may not have heard the words right. And I think it's really just where it says, right after the bills, it says calling for at least 20 minutes of optional uninterrupted supervised, safe, et cetera. Is that what you said or? Or is that your?
Not exactly what I said, but that sounds much better than what I said. I, I was a little bit more clumsy with it.
No worries. Okay, so Randy's made a motion, David has seconded adding the word optional. Where it says, again, calling for at least 20 minutes of, and then insert the word optional uninterrupted supervised. Et cetera. Any discussion on that amendment? All right, I'm going to try to pick up the pace a bit. So if I move too quickly, please flail your hands around, try to get my attention. I'll stop, we'll go back. So this is to vote on the amendment, adding the word optional. Dave?
Yes.
Jess?
Yes.
June?
Yes.
Lisa?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Randy?
Yes.
Tom?
Yeah.
And I will vote yes. So that passes unanimously. So now we're back to the main resolution. There was a motion by Dave and seconded by Tom to support this resolution now as amended. Any other questions or comments? All right. So this is to support resolution four, Dave.
Yes.
Jess?
Yes.
June?
Yes.
Lisa?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Randy?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
And I vote yes, that's unanimous. Thank you. Resolution five, Dave?
By the way, we can speed this up by just reading the therefore be it resolved. We've done that in the past instead of reading all of the wherances.
My wherances?
Thank you.
Therefore, okay, so resolution five zero tolerance policies. If you don't mind, I would like to read this one. Whereas zero tolerance policies are harsh and a harsh school district. Sorry. Speed this up a little bit. Here we go. Resolution five zero tolerance policies sponsored by the M A S C board of directors. Whereas zero tolerance policies and harsh school discipline policies have been shown by the United States Department of Education's Office for Civil Rights to have disproportionately negative impact in students of color, students of disabilities and students who identify as LGBTQ plus. And whereas the U S Department of Justice and the U S Department of Education have jointly called for public elementary and secondary schools to meet their obligation under federal law to administer student discipline without decriminal, without discrimination on the basis of race, color or national origin and urge in guidance for public schools to find alternatives to zero tolerance and harsh discipline policies. And whereas the majority of suspensions in Massachusetts public schools do not involve violent criminal or drug related incidents. And whereas students who have been suspended are three times more likely to be pushed out or dropped out of schools. And these students are three and a half times more likely to be arrested than students who complete high school. Therefore, be it resolved that the Massachusetts Association of School Committees call upon the legislature to enact or amend legislation, current bills. Senate bill three forty-four, House bill six sixty-four to encourage the use of restorative therapeutic and educational approaches to incidents whenever possible over the use of zero tolerance policies in order to provide students the best chance to remain in the public school systems of the Commonwealth.
Thank you, Dave. Dave, got your hand up?
So one of the reasons I wanted to read this is because in the DESI data about North Middlesex over the last 10 years, looking at the groups that are identified by this type of, or by this legislation. Students that are minorities, students that are low income, students are special ed are two and a half times more likely to face suspension or severe punishment than their peers. So I think that and this is, this is a trend over the last 10 years and two and a half or two times, I think, is the, is the base number. I really think that this is something as a district and as a Commonwealth, we need to address.
Thank you, David. Anybody else? Dave, do you want to make a motion?
Doing a lot of talking. All right, so I, I move that we support resolution five.
I second.
Thank you, Jess. All right, motion's been made in second. It's support resolution five. Randy, comments?
I just want to ask the administration on how they feel about this, if there's anything that we're not considering on how it's written, that may not be or may need to be amended.
Sure. So in, in, in looking at the entire resolution, I, I am fine with it as it's written until we get to the very last sentence where it says approaches to incidents whenever possible over the use of zero, zero tolerance policies. I'd like to know what wherever possible means and who's dictating wherever possible based on the offense. Again, it's, it's very easy for people to make recommendations unless they're actually in the school, working in the school. And there are some incidents where restorative justice may not fit the bill. When it comes to a consequence, it's not only accepted by parents in the district, but also staff in the district, if we're talking about student safety. So that last line saying wherever possible, I would just want to know what that means and who's making that decision. If it's people at the state house, it makes me uncomfortable. Everything else I agree with as written. I only mentioned the state house piece because they're not in schools. We are.
Do super kind to you, is there a suggested way to change that to say that like approaches to incident?
Again, I, I'm not necessarily even against the language. I'm just questioning who's making the determination wherever possible. If they're going to leave it up to the schools, that's, that's something that's acceptable. But if, if the state is going to turn around and outline for us what they believe is possible. Then to me, that could be problematic. It depends. And again, when I say this, I'm talking about the most severe offenses where student safety is really put at risk. Student, not just student safety. So I don't know if we have a recommendation. I just have a question. And that in order to fully support it, and it's not my decision to support it, the school committee's decision to support it. I just question that phrase. Wherever. Who do we have to explain that to?
Right. Just trying to think if there's a way to toward that, Dave, do you have a comment?
Yeah, I was gonna say, okay, so could we amend it to say therefore be it resolved that the Massachusetts, Massachusetts Association of School Committees call upon the legislature to enact or amend legislation, current bills, et cetera, to encourage the use of restorative therapeutic or educational approaches to incidents over the use of zero tolerance policies in order to provide students the best chance to remain in the public school systems of the Commonwealth. It just says to encourage the use. It doesn't say that it requires the use.
I would second that.
So David, that just strikes whenever possible. Is that really all?
Yes.
Okay, just to be clear. And Randy seconded, so thank you, Randy. All right, any questions or comments on the amendment to strike the words whenever possible from the last paragraph? Dave, is your hand still up or you have something else?
Sorry, I'm just flipping through a lot of screens.
No, it's fine. I just want to make sure I don't skip over you. All right, so we will vote on the amendment to strike the words whenever possible from the final paragraph. Dave?
Yes.
Jess?
Yes.
June?
Yes.
Lisa?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Randy?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
And I will vote yes. So now we're back to supporting resolution five as amended. Any last comments or questions? All right, Dave?
Yes.
Jess?
Yes.
June?
Yes.
Lisa?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Randy?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
And I will vote yes. Resolution seven, school committees and receivership.
So I'll just read the whereas.
I skipped resolution six, alternative to MCAS.
All right. I will just, I'll read the whereas or therefore, excuse me. So resolution six, alternative to MCAS sponsored by the M A C board of directors. Therefore, be it resolved that the Massachusetts Association of School Committees call upon the legislature to establish a commission to research and analyze alternative means for students to demonstrate academic achievements, which can be used to satisfy graduation requirements for individual students and accountability standards for Massachusetts public schools and school districts.
All right, any questions, comments or emotion on this one? All right, I will say, I believe it was, well, it's probably been every year for the last handful of years, but I think it was two years ago, there was a similar MCAS resolution, I believe. Which I would assume if things had come of that, we wouldn't have this one here, so. I'm not really sure how this differs.
I mean, I feel like before we were just like, well, let's get rid of the MCAS and now we're
Find a different way?
I mean, it's, well, no, no, it will find a way to see if we can find a way to see if we can like, I don't know. Sorry, Nancy, you had your hand up.
Yeah.
I'm wondering, based on everything that the state has done over the last few years to look at, at the high school level, passing specific courses in lieu of the MCAS when they couldn't take the test, if now there's really starting to think outside the box. To say that, does this really have to be part of the graduation requirement? That's the only thing that I feel has changed since the last resolution is that they actually lived it because MCAS couldn't exist.
That's a good point, yeah. All right, does anybody want to make a motion?
I'll move to support resolution six, alternative to MCAS.
Thank you, Randy. Do you have a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Jess. Any other questions, comments? All right, Dave?
I'm staying.
Jess?
Yes.
June?
Yes.
Lisa?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Randy?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
And I will vote yes, so that passes. Thank you. Resolution seven. Second to last one, Dave, come on, take this home.
No, I mean, it's not even the penultimate. Okay, resolution seven, school committees and receivership submitted by the M A S C board of directors. Okay. So I'll just read the whole thing. Whereas state receivership includes all powers of the superintendent and school committee, see three below. Therefore, be it resolved that the M A, Massachusetts Association of School Committees file for and support legislation which seeks to preserve the authority of the elected body, the school committee, as provided in Mass General Law, Chapter sixty-nine, Section one K, by deleting the words and school committee as noted and by inserting the following. Nothing in this section shall permit the board of elementary and secondary education or the commissioner to remove the authority of the school committee. Be it further resolved that the M A S C support local initiatives and legislation to restore school committee oversight of the superintendent and or receiver, including but not limited to goal setting, performance review and evaluation process. Rationale, receivership is an equity issue which can be seen in the type of districts that are taken into receivership, high population, Latino communities and economically disadvantaged and receivership strips away the voice of the voices of the community that elected school committee members in their communities. This resolution gives the power back to the board and there are no clearly set guidelines on and there are no clearly set guidelines on the measures which need to be taken for districts to get back local control with no clear timeframe on the expectation that DESI will, uh, will turn around a district.
All right, any questions, comments on this one? If not, I will take a motion.
I'll move that we take no action on this one. I just don't know enough about, uh, the whole process and, and everything to even start to comment or think about this one.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mike. Uh, questions, comments on taking no action?
I mean, I'm good with taking no action. I do think it's important for communities to have control over their schools. But again, like, uh, Randy and Tom, or Randy and Mike have said, I, I don't know enough about this.
All right. Seeing no other questions? All right, moving on, Dave?
Yes.
Uh, Jess?
Yes.
June?
Yes.
Lisa?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Randy?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
And I will vote yes, so we will take no action on resolution seven. Uh, resolution eight?
Here we go. All right. Resolution eight, electric school buses sponsored by the MASC Resolutions Committee. Therefore be it resolved that MASC petitioned Congress to appropriate $30 billion for improving the electrical supply infrastructure and providing electric buses and charging stations.
Dave?
I'm gonna, I'm gonna keep it as professional as possible here. Um, we can't get the money that we need to pay for the school buses that we were promised with regional school buses. We can't get competitive, uh, offers proposed. And here we are, talking about electric school buses. And when I saw this, it made me so angry that I didn't want to talk about any of this stuff tonight. Um.
You said it much more eloquently than I could have. Thank you, Dave.
I don't know what the MASC is doing. Uh, yes, Tesla's for, Tesla's with internet for everybody, I guess. Uh, you know, I'm just, sure, electric school buses are great. I want school buses that are, that are paid for in the way they said they would pay for them. We can't get the 25% of, of idea funding that we're supposed to, $30 billion for electric school buses.
We can't even purchase new gas buses right now.
Couldn't have said it better myself, Dave.
Much more behaved than I would have been. I applaud it.
And any other comments or questions? I think Jess is extremely happy she's joined the school committee this year.
I will move that we vote no on a resolution eight.
I have a second?
I'll second.
I can.
I was gonna say, not, not everybody at once. I'm gonna, can I give that to the committee? Is that allowed? All right, any other questions or comments? All right, I, I, I agree with this one too. I think it's similar to some of the previous ones, um, in our hierarchy of things that are important and, uh, I, I, I don't even know where to begin. I think, Dave, you've said it as well as, as anybody heard, it just.
Can we amend this? Can we amend this just so that it just strips all the language and just goes back and says, fund the regional buses that you said you would fund?
See, that's the problem is where the, the regional schools are such the minority, it will never get the approval, so it, that's, that's why these are a waste of time. They'll shut us down in two seconds.
I don't think an amendment can completely alter the meaning of the motions. But I mean, you could certainly change the dollar amount to say just $30.
It's, it's better for something, if, if we are gonna have a delegate, it's better for you to address this on the floor when there's time for comment because like I said, it's, it's just not gonna go anywhere.
Yeah.
I'd hate to see us waste time wording this for no purpose. I mean, next year, we're gonna have mandates for Easy-Bake Ovens so everyone can cook their own desserts.
I just, I, I mean, I think, Dave, the, the point that that, again, you said so eloquently is just we're, we're not even getting the money that we were promised for other things, or actually for transportation. Why are we gonna go asking for more money for other aspects of transportation, which they're already not paying for? It just, it doesn't make sense. Um, so. Any other?
Well, do, do remember, like, like Mike said, is we're regional. They pay for region, or they're supposed to. They don't pay for town busing.
Right.
So individual towns, which are the majority of the districts in the state, have no, you know, have no funding whatsoever for the buses that they use. So to ask for money, you know, they don't have the history unless they're keeping up with regionals that, uh, the state's not paying.
That's why our state politicians can't get any progress on this because, again, regional schools are in the minority, so the bigger towns and cities won't support this because it's gonna come out of them and they don't get anything.
All right, any other last questions, comments? Okay, this is to not support resolution eight. Uh, so a yes vote means we are not supporting this. Uh, Dave?
Yes.
Jess?
Yes.
June?
Yes.
Lisa?
Yes.
Mike?
Let me think about it. Yes.
Randy?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
And I will vote yes, so that is unanimous. Uh, and lastly, resolution nine.
Uh, resolution nine prohibiting the use of Native American mascots sponsored by the MASC Board of Directors. Um, therefore be it resolved that the Massachusetts Association of Schools Committees support legislation calling for regulations prohibiting public schools from using an athletic team name, logo, or mascot which names refers to, represents, or is associated with Native Americans, including aspects of Native American cultures and specific Native American tribes. Current bill, Senate 294. Regulations would not prohibit a Native American tribe as identified by the Commission on Indian Affairs located within the boundaries of the Commonwealth from choosing to use a Native-related name or logo for a sports team comprised of its tribal members, including a tribal school or intramural league, or from that tribal nation giving explicit consent for a school to use their particular tribe name.
I think this is one of those things that you just have to leave to the towns and the people to discuss. I don't think this is really a school committee issue personally. I'm not saying I'm for it or against it, I'm just saying this is something that's probably a discussion for towns to have with their school committees, stick them up with these votes.
Like you took the words right out of my mouth. Exactly what I was thinking is, why do we need to have MASC spending time to try and regulate this from the state level? This really is a community issue. Let them decide, keep the power down here.
Get back to busing.
Buses, Mike, not busing.
Buses, busing, electric. How about just give us money for the stuff they promise?
There you go. Um, I, I don't think that this is a North Middlesex issue. Uh, and I've, I've heard way too many opinions on this to believe that we should be sticking our, our feet into this one. Uh, I move that, uh, we, uh, oh God, what's the third option? So there's yes, no, and.
Uh, just, uh, not take no action.
Take no action. I move that we take no action on resolution nine.
I second that.
All right, so motion's been made by Dave, seconded by Jess to take no action on resolution nine. Any other questions or comments on this one? All right, Dave?
Yes.
Jess?
Yes.
June?
Yes.
Lisa?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Randy?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
And I will vote yes, so we will take no action on that. And that, my friends, brings us to the end of the resolutions.
Oh wait, there's more.
Yeah. There's more. Um, all right, moving on to the subcommittee reports. Lisa, do you have an update on accelerator repair?
Nope, and none for financial as well.
All right, um, negotiation personnel, Tom, any news or updates?
Likewise, nothing on our end.
All right, and on to policy, Randy.
Uh, we just have, uh, a couple of policies for adoption, uh, I'm sorry, for our first reading.
I think they're for adoption.
Adoption, yes, okay. That's what I thought so, and then I like, it was looking first reading on here, uh, it said both of them. So just two for adoption. We had, uh, had IIB class size and JGH student travel was approved at the last meeting. Uh, for our first reading, I have not received, uh, any comments from school committee members or the community or the administration on any changes, uh, that were recommended or, uh, asked to be looked at. Uh, so with that, I would move, um, that the school committee vote to approve policy IIB class size and JGH student travel for adoption.
All right, motion's been made by Randy, seconded by June to approve these policies for adoption. Any questions or comments on that? And sorry, Randy, did you, you moved to do both policies at once, correct, or just one?
Both policies at once.
Okay, thank you. Uh, questions or comments from anybody? All right, uh, so this is to approve policy IIB and JGH for adoption, Dave?
Yes.
Uh, Jess?
Yes.
June?
Yes.
Lisa?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Randy?
Yes.
Uh, Tom?
Yes.
And I will vote yes, so that passes. Thank you. Um, any other business from the committee? Any items for our next meeting that folks want to bring up now that we should put on the agenda? All right. Then I will take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
We're about to read.
Second.
And then Dave. All right, uh, Dave?
Yes.
Uh, Jess?
Yes.
June?
Yes.
Lisa?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Randy?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
And I will vote yes, so we are adjourned.